Okay, let's start with the bottom line. Okay, we've got lean receipt. Where are we? Are we revenues or where are we? Expenses?
We're in revenues.
Okay, you've got to take that out. That's the revenues. Take out that 130, let's go down to revenue expansion. Okay, let's start with the expenses.
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna...
Oh, no, no, no.
It's really hard to hear when there's a lot of...
Okay, let's hold off. All right, let's get down to the expenses. All right, so now you want to add a line down there that says roads.
Where? Between 45 and 46?
Yeah, right there.
Can I ask a question, Mark?
Yeah.
In the previous budget cycles, when the city or the town was saving for the 1.6 million for the road project that was previously done,
Yeah.
we apparently must not have seen a need to have a line item for roads.
No.
So somebody help me, Ben, help me understand why it's so important for you to have, for you to recommend a line item for roads. Or is, I'm just curious, why?
So if we look at the previous budget cycles going back six, seven years, the costs six years ago were not out of proportion to other towns on that address.
No, I don't know that. To make your calls up.
Well, you can look it up. But in general, like, six, seven years ago, your costs were roughly in line with your revenues. What's happened is our revenues have grown tremendously because of the values of the houses that we just had that discussion. But as their revenues gone up, the cost of running the town should not have gone up much. You'd added eight houses.
Are we talking about a budget line item?
We are talking about... Okay, so let's add, what number do you want to add there, Dan?
Let me finish answering the question.
No, I want you to go through those similar...
You're collecting every month since...
We know all about your town's gopia.
Yeah. What number do you want to add?
So how did the council, I'm sorry, how did the council, let me ask Ed, let me ask you a question, Dan.
Hold on, what?
I'm not allowed to ask Ed a question?
Sit and quiet until I recognize you.
Okay. I'm going to run for mayor. If anyone wants this town, they have to show up and see me. This is the biggest joke of business, obviously.
You're a joke.
What was that?
I said, "You're a joke."
Close the door.
And why is that, sir?
Look, you're out of order. Just close the door. Either leave or come and sit down. What would you like to do?
Well, I'd like the town that would actually listen to, the council's the one that's supposed to be running the town. You're supposed to be the one that sits behind that and all that stuff.
Would you like to sit down, or would you like to wait?
You're not, you're not.
Would you like to sit down?
Please, either participate in the meeting.
Well, I want to participate, but I have to raise my hand. No one else has to raise their hand, but because of me, I have to raise my hand.
Actually, the audience is not allowed to speak except in public hearing.
You're allowed.
We're just trying to ask for order. That's all grounds.
Elizabeth is the one that wants to speak. Elizabeth asked, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, just trying to understand, so we have to save 5% in order to...
No, we don't, we don't have, no.
But, let's just say that we want to?
The objective is, because I'm the one that did the firm finance, I'm the one that talks to the financial advisors, I'm the one that knows S and P ratings. I'm the one that's going to have to give us a rating. What we do is, is we save as much money as we can. And then, when it's time to do the roads, we spend as much as we can down. That's our goal.
So it's not an requirement to save anything?
No, you don't have to save anything. You could borrow the entire amount. There's no such thing, it's not a mortgage. There's not a down payment, there's not anything like that. In fact, if you were to talk to S and P, what they, I've already talked to the people. If we were to take our cash and pay down our debt before the new roads come in, that's actually a big negative. They would rather us have a lot of cash. They'd rather have a cash cushion than to pay down your debt. That's how the ratings work. So it's kind of like, you paid off your mortgage, but your bank account was low, that's actually a negative. They'd rather you still have a mortgage, but you had a lot of money in the bank. The money is the cushion. So they actually don't want us to pay off the loan early than to plead our cash. So our goal in the next four years is to make as much cash as we can in the bank account. That's our goal. Make as much cash as we can. Yes, Mayor?
Okay, so two questions following up on that. What is the projected cost of the next road repairs or...
Okay, good question.
Because unless we know that goal, I don't understand, you know, how we put together a budget to achieve that. That's all I ask.
No, that's fine. So our roads over here cost 1.6 million.
How many, how many miles are there lost?
Roughly, it's about 35% of the town. So it's about a third. So we've got two-thirds still to go. The actual cost of the roads over here was about a million, about 1.9 million. But we paid 300,000 of engineering and inspection, hit all that out of pocket in cash upfront.
Is that included in the 1.9 number?
That was the 1.9. So we borrowed 1.6, but we spent 300 to pay for all the engineering and the inspection, all the non-concrete.
It's still total cost, so it's 1.9 for 1/3 of the city.
For about 35, yeah, exactly. So now, over there, there's, it's, concrete's gone up, but the job is bigger. Bigger's cheaper.
Sure.
So it's probably going to be between 3 and 4 million.
Well, I would make a recommendation that we somehow identify what that projected number is. And that can be changed all the time, right? But we need to know what we're trying to achieve here. Then we can, my personal opinion is, then you can talk about financing options and all of this other stuff. But to me, it's very difficult to look at a line item budget like this without understanding what we're trying to achieve. Whether that be four years, five years. I guess my biggest concern is long-range or even short-term planning. It seems very siloed, so someone being new to the village, I have no historical knowledge. I want the variance in your budget to actual has been year over year. Have no clue.
I mean, here's, I, I...
Right, so I, I just don't know, you know, should you save 100,000 a year or 200,000?
Well, let me, let me just, let me throw some reality on the fire here, okay? We have $16,000 surplus. We have $4 million in roads. We're never going to get there. You can't get there from here.
Right, so we have to together a strategy to do it.
We only take in $240,000 a year in taxes. We, we're going to have to borrow 4 million. We're going to have to borrow.
There'll be one of the two, sure.
I mean, no, we can't, we can't save them. It'll take 35 years to save, you know, we're never going to save the money. We can't save 4 million dollars, not only taking in 240,000 a year and running the city. So the goal is, we save as much as we can, we've got to borrow the rest. I mean, there's no way we're going to get to 4 million dollars in our lifetime. It can't happen. You know what I'm saying?
I'm not sure. I haven't done revenue projections on a complete build out of remaining land that's left here. So I don't know if that's technically achievable or not achievable.
Let's, let's double the size of the city. That means our total taxes go up from 240 to 500?
You say 300 a year, and we can decide how many years it'll take to get to whatever number we're trying to get to. So, anyway, so, but just, just kind of getting into this process. I don't know what number we're trying to achieve, so I have no idea what. City cap reserves, like, big deal. I mean, I don't know what we want to try to achieve.
Larry, you have a question?
Well, I do have a comment.
Yeah.
Municipities generally, as a rule, don't budget and pay for roads in advance. Capital improvement projects are paid for in arrears, based on financing, providing, or other types of financing. So I think what we're trying to confuse the issue here with talking about trying to pre-fund 4 million dollars of roads in the future, we would never get there. The issue is, do we want to try to put aside some money for some of the engineering and things like that, like we did last time? So you pay the engineering stuff upfront, and then finance the actual construction of the roads in three, four, five years, when we get to that point. That's, I think, what we need to be talking about. When we start talking about trying to finance this whole thing in advance.
Larry, can I address that?
Because what you do is, you build roads, the city continues to grow, future growth helps fund and pay off the debt, just like we're doing now. It would be just for that.
So Larry, I'd like to address that. I think, I think coming at it from a similar angle is that I don't know what the roads are going to cost exactly. I've been told 3.5 to 4.5. What I'm trying to say is, the first thing you do, regardless of the roads or anything else, is you run a lean budget. And what I've seen for the last six years is the expense of running the city has gone up way more than inflation. Inflation averages 1.5%, 2% for the last ten. But we're way over that, 49%, 50%, if you take a look at this. So on something, the first thing you do is you take the expenses and you trim them back, and you run a lean government. Save as much money as you can. But you still should have a goal, and you still need that long-term plan. And what we're doing is that we're not bringing in the right people to get those numbers leading back into them. So since we're not going to do that, my answer is, well, then take a number. I picked a hundred grand. And at least if you could save 100 grand towards the roads according to your reserves, I'm okay with that. But the first thing you need to do is trim back your expenses. Forget about the revenue management, just go out to the expenses multiple times. Pick up the detail of those things and find out what we can cut. And if we can cut 25 or 35 or 40,000 dollars on the budget in one or two workshops, I think our time would be well spent.
Okay, so let me, again, let me, let me throw a dose of reality, everybody, okay?
Do you want to ask me what question, Mark? So our taxes, 25 cents.
Right.
Debt services, 5. Of what we pay from 25 plus the 5, how much of that tax per thousand is required to pay the loan each year?
About 18 cents.
Okay, so the rest is, so before the roads, we were taking in 25.
Yep.
And we did the roads, and now we're running the city on less than 25?
Yeah, I mean, let me, let me give the facts. Okay, hold on, Dan. Let me give the facts to his argument, okay? We have houses that get built. You know that? We actually have houses that get built. You have to pay the building inspector. If there's 10 houses that get built, you have to pay the building inspector for 10 houses. You can't look at our total expenses and say they're going up over time. Well, yeah, if I have five houses built this year, and only one house built last year, I got to pay the building inspector. That's why our expenses go up. We, we don't control them. Now, let's have a dose of reality. I wish I had a whiteboard here. Let's, let's have a reality check real quick.
Don't we collect these promissories to...
Right, Dan's saying our expenses are going up. Yeah.
So the revenue is going up.
Yeah, he's saying the expenses. He's following his mantra of expenses. Now, look, here's a dose of reality. Here's a dose of reality. We take in, let's, let's make it clear. We take in $240,000 in tax revenue, about 240, okay? Out of that 240, we spend 150 of it on the concrete roads, out of the 240. Now, the remaining amount, I got to pay Linda. We got to mow the city. We got to keep the lights on. We got to pay the attorney, okay? We got to pay for insurance. We got to do all these things with the remaining amount that's left. Now, how are you going to get another 100 or some, you can't get there. We're super lean. If I put 18 cents of debt servicing up there, so that we were running the city, if I had 240 just to pay Linda and keep the things mowed and the playground, if I had that full amount, you're damn right we'd be setting aside 100,000 for the roads. We used to set aside about 60. In the good old days, before we put the concrete roads there, we would set aside about $60,000 each year for roads. That's the asphalt roads that you see. We used to do about 60 a year, okay? If, if you want to take that 240 and spend most of it on the concrete, you can't get there from here. What do you want me to run the city with? We're already using most of that money to pay the bonds, okay? That's what a lot of that money goes to.
That's half the story.
Okay.
The other half, if we can take a look at the revenues, okay, I didn't want to go back to the, but let's go back to the revenues.
Yep.
We'll see the 240 in sales tax.
Can I show you the line here?
No, no, just go to the top. See the top there, it says 240 in sales tax. So what the mayor's talking about is, he's throwing all your costs into that 240. Let's scroll onto the bottom here. Your total revenue is 446. Now, some of that, some of that is in and out, building inspections, things like that. You've got to kind of discount that stuff. But the rest of that is not in and out. The rest of that is fees that we collect. Some of it is sales tax. Some of it is franchise fees. These are income to the town, which needs to be fed in. So when the mayor says that you're running a lean, lean operation, you're not. Running lean, lean, if all you took in was 240, if you took in 240 and you were spent, I'm with you, I'm good. You take in 446, you minus, let's say, 30, it's still 406. And you, and you just, now all of a sudden, you're not running something. And there on this, my problem, when we took out the money for the loans, the first year, it was a lean budget. And every year after that, it's creeped up 10, 15, 11, 12, 13%. To the point that we've creeped up our income, and some would say it's good or bad, but the income coming into the town is at 446. Call it 406, and you give rid of the ins and the outs. 406, 160,000 dollar debt, worst of us have been going. That's what we should be doing, is looking at, looking at our spending.
Okay, so let's, let's back up a second. Slight point, counterpoint. Last year, for the first time, we got above 2007. They took in more money in 2006 than we had until last year.
I'm not talking 2006.
So you want to talk about lean? We have, we have, first time in a decade that we actually had more money than they had in 2006.
Are we changing any of these numbers here, or, I mean, we just get a...
That's true.
Okay.
All right. But I don't see, I think adding a line and trying to put 100,000, you're never going to get there. But...
So where are we actually at?
Maybe, maybe we need some help getting there. If the council can't go through the workshop parts of it, maybe we need to get some town folks.
Let's go through the numbers. You want to play a number, you put 100,000.
Dan, you had two opportunities over the last two months.
And I've done the same here.
And you've done nothing in terms of changing your number. I tried to press your last, last meeting, what you would change, and you wouldn't change anything.
I've offered over a dozen suggestions, so you need to go, you need to spend...
Really? Well, we're, I don't remember any suggestions at all.
The council...
Give me one, give me one example of one of your suggestions.
I go out to travel, and it doesn't do one of your suggestions. The council needs to go to a workshop and hammer this stuff out. We need to go down to the...
Let's go.
What's the travel line? What's the travel, what's the budget travel line?
Uh, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Where's that?
Let's talk about it.
Travel and me expenses, 3,000 dollars. That's the expenses for, right here, that's Linda to go to training.
Required training.
That's, yeah.
So you're going to cut all that out? Is that what you'd recommend, just zero it out?
I think we should look at what we're spending money on and see what we can do.
Well, now you're not answering the question.
What should that number be? Yes, Mayor?
I have a question.
Sure.
Hey, it's along the same lines. You had referenced that we have a lot of expenses, such as lawn care, such as light, such as support. Do we have lists of vendors that we use? And are we on any kind of contracts? What kind of contract negotiations do we have with these vendors? And is there something we can look at, maybe changing or getting? Do we do bids for different vendors that we use?
Yeah, so what, what we've done historically is, for instance, we used to pay for mowing. You have to do town mowing. We have a park, we have the utilities, the water, sewer, plant, all that stuff. Sorry. We have two or three empty lots in town that we own now.
That's happening?
Yeah, so we used to mow those, we used to spend $9,000 a year. We sent it out to bid, that was the bid, there was $9,000 a year in mow.
That was the lowest bid that you had?
That was the lowest bid, right, it was 9,000.
There was no RFP.
So what we did, this one was, this is going to be on the council, man.
I've, I've been watching what's going on.
Come on.
Okay, look, let me finish, let, let me just finish, wait, okay. So we used to pay $9,000. That was the low bid. We sent it out to bid, that was the bid. What we did is, we bought our own mower. We took it in-house. So we bought it in-house, we owned a mower. We spent about 5,000 on mowing, for the mower, phone warranty, everything else. And now we pay just, a little amount of services, we pay them just to mow, just to labor. And we own, and I don't know, what did we spend on mowing?
Where's the mower?
23.
24.
35.
What, what number?
25, 23?
Oh, 25, 23, yes.
It's 35.
Town mowers. Okay, so we spent about 3,500 mowing it instead of 9,000. So that was one of the things that we did. Other than that, I mean, we don't, we've tried to make this building more energy efficient. We've got energy efficient screens, we've got cold down on thermal cells. We've done everything we can to make this building more efficient.
These lights?
The lights are all LED that Dave Getka got, and we didn't replace those. We've pretty much tried everything we know of to, on the city side, to do this, but...
We showed a water well off in Oakdale.
Yeah, I mean, we, we try and operate, but a lot of these things, you know, when you look at them, I mean, the advertising is mandatory by state law, elections. We have to pay for the election machines, there's nothing you can do about that. You know, building inspections, depends upon the building permits, fire and AMS. One of our biggest expenses is the fire and AMS. We got to pay a little amount, the fire department. Nothing we can do about that, because we, you know, we can't...
And that one is, that one's a flat rate plus however many times we count.
Yeah, so really, that's our biggest expense, but that's non-negotiable. You know, I mean, we...
Actually, on the fire and AMS, I think you pressed this out a couple of years ago, so we paid 25, a little amount. What was like Dallas?
Like Dallas was somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to 500,000.
So 25,000 seems like a pretty good deal.
Sure.
Mark, I'd like to add, when you were talking about the mowing. I have seen you out there mowing, and I've also seen Clint up there flipping the limbs off the front entrance. So a lot of our, our stuff that is done, is done by those people sitting up there on my own house.
Well, I was taking credit, well, that was it, but yeah.
Oh, sorry, Ed.
So I had to pick up trash. We don't, we don't, we pick up all the trash, the council members pick up the trash. We don't actually pay labor for the trash that our neighbors throw out on the street.
I mean, there's just, they're running the city, there's just lots of...
Why, I was just curious, some specific vendors, contractors?
Yeah, because we don't, we don't really have a lot of outside vendors, because we don't have a lot, like, you know, we don't have athletic fields or something where we have to pay.
There's no retainers, let's just pay as you go, as much.
What is that, I just have a, what is that, the town call improvements?
Yeah.
That's for, it went up to last year, I think it said 4, I can't read that far away, 400 or 700?
No, 400, no.
And then up to 4,000 for this year projected? What is that going to...
That's like, we became a polling place. This is actually now, you don't have to go to crossroads. This is actually, the Republican primary was here. Well, we had to, we had to have a handicap parking spot. So this, oh, sorry, outside this window is a, is a parking spot here.
But that was for 2017 budget, right?
Yeah.
So why is it 4,000 for this year projected?
So part of the other improvements we're talking about is actually, right now, that door is illegal.
Okay.
If there was a fire and we all want to go out of it, the door opens in. It's a commercial building, the door needs to open out.
Okay.
We need to have a push bar, so there's, there's things like that. One of the doors, one of them, we're doing some improvements in the back office to try and make the, make more efficient of the space. We need, we need more space, but we're not going to add on the building, so we're trying to be more efficient with the space we have. So there's just a little, there's a few things like that. Over the weekend, we finally got our little screen fences outside. That one actually, that one would be a free thing. That got rolled into the LDA tree there. So it's not any one nugget, it's a bunch of little items that are just basically trying to make the building more...
Like the ramp.
Oh, that's right.
The ramp outside. This building is supposed to be handicap accessible, we're a government building.
Yeah.
So that door isn't legal, it's not ADA.
And that's for, on next year, could be then, could be handled next year, correct?
Right, yeah. So usually with city hall, we try and pick off things. Usually when a builder, when a builder's doing a house, we kind of ask them, hey, could you send your guy over here and paint? You know, it's trying to get a trade to do some of the small jobs, it's really hard. So, you know, we've got some new doors that we're going to have, hopefully one of the builders is going to hang for us.
And then the customer has to hang with a hundred dollars, because they're going to have a guy out here. You're looking at a painter, why don't you paint him, so that's not going to come as a penalty, other than the painting.
But, you know, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the stuff is, you know, like I say, if you, you know, telephones, we got a telephone, we got an internet here. It's kind of like you go down each line. I mean, electricity, we got it at the building. Propane, we got to heat the building. Paywall, that's Linda, we have to pay Linda.
Do we get money for... I was just going to say, do we get money for tax often at the city? As anybody that gets money, you know, the city can get money for telecom? For anyone that operates in, within the town, a business?
Transplanting people.
We can get sales tax.
Sales.
We get sales tax.
Four, okay.
That's on the revenue side. Yeah, we get, we get 1% of the sales tax in the city. You know, drainage improvements, that's fixing some drainage issues we have on the other side of town. We have some culverts. I took Liz on a tour of that at one point. Town functions, what that is, that's the Easter Bunny, that's the Halloween hayride, that's the Christmas with Santa. That's the town functions. Yes, Mayor?
Up to the top, I mean, like, well, a big one was the attorney fees and stuff?
Yeah.
And I thought there was outstanding situations this, this year, but like, could that be something that we can get?
Which one are you talking about?
The attorney fees?
Yeah.
Yeah, the attorney fees are a, that was a court case that resolved itself last year. So that, this is the final revenue.
So basically, you could like, look at shaving down some, see what you're looking at.
Next year.
Because before it was like 50.
That's going to drop, part of that's a settlement, which goes away.
Yeah.
So this thing is going to drop dramatically next year.
So one of the things, we, we agreed, we made an agreement with the, for the settlement, to spread it out over two fiscal years. So what's remaining is the final payment, so aside for next fiscal year.
So then next year would be less?
Yeah, it's going to be dramatic, yeah.
It's expected to be less unless the town has to, has space to defend themselves against something. We can't control somebody coming in and being an aggressor against the town.
Jamie?
I have a quick question. So we invested $4,000 for the, to make it a polling place, but how come there's no handicap spaces over there? If we made those for handicap?
They're, they are handicapped.
But there's no, there's no...
So what we do is, we, day to day, it's a parking spot, and then when we're expecting a polling place or something like that, we put out a handicap sign.
We have signs on posts, port of it.
Yeah, but isn't, aren't we supposed to have that always since we are a town hall, handicap spots?
We're not, under ADA rules, we're not required. But as a polling place, that was part of the rules of the polling place.
I know, but every town hall that I ever gone to, there is handicap parking spot there, like, for my kids or...
How many town halls have you gone to that only have two parking spaces? That's, that's, that's the rule.
But I'm just saying, we can make one, right?
Well, you know, that's, that's a good point.
I mean, he was...
Can we talk about that afterwards?
Yeah, 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 but I'm just saying that since we, we invested the money to make those handicap spaces for somebody, it would be nice to actually said that there is one available for somebody.
And, and I'm happy to talk about it, or I think any of us are, it's just, it's not the budget item.
Okay, so, anyone, does anybody have any questions about any more line items?
Let's look at the attorney fees, 40 of that is a settlement.
40 of that is...
Should it be 10? Should it be 5? I would argue that the town should cut down on legal bills as much as possible. When you have roads the way we do, you should save them up. And that would be an example of where you could cut 10 or whatever, or not.
Don't we already pay into the TML now, for attorney? We pay in for the TML, so they can represent us instead of going to a private group, correct?
Well, with TML issue...
Ed's saying this, no, I'm curious, because everything I've read on that, it does...
So, so, here's the way that our, one of the things that our insurer does is, is our insurer will provide us with a defense if we get sued. So if we get sued, our insurance company will step in and do that. Now, TML will also, for free, give us generic advice. So if we send to them, like, for example, once I sent them an email and said, can you find in the transportation code where it says, we can put up a stop sign? I can't find it anywhere. And they sent back, oh yeah, it's in section 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And that was fine. So they'll give you generic stuff. But things like, you know, a developer agreement, or we're, we're going to look at ordinance or impact fees that we're, we're opposing, stuff, they won't do that. They, they'll only provide, they'll provide specific...
They won't, they don't provide, it does, they don't provide ordinances, so...
Because they don't want to compete with the city attorney.
And anytime they provide advice, it's really not, it's not black or white, unless it's a code, is it in the code, yes or no? And if it's a gray area, they're, they're really going to answer them.
They tell you to go back to your city attorney. Can you tell me to go back to you, Cindy, I'm trying to. I, I heard that a lot last week.
Just push back.
Yes.
So we do use and leverage them as much as we can, but it's, you still have to have, you still have to have them. Now, the nice thing about our, our attorney is, there's no retainer, is pay as you go. You call them, you get the beer from them. If you don't call them, the beer's out. So, yes, that number could be less. The big number, the big number in there is 40, that is an obligation, has to pay. What's her name?
Mark, did you say there's three lots? Did you say there's three lots of city homes right now?
Uh, we're crashed, you know, we, we, well, we have four, we only, yeah, two or three, yeah. We sold one, yeah.
So that could be something that could be in the part to go after, you know, for the engineering and all that of the roads is, put a plan together, let's sell these, or apply those funds towards.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
So the two lots that are remaining, one is potentially high value, so that could be, that could be on the revenue side. The other one, we're, we're cautiously sitting on, right? We're using that as inventory, we're taxing it, we just have to pay a loan. That's potentially a wealth site in the future, as identified by the CIP. So, for right now, until we get a situation, it's all settled, with how the things can develop now, it's really cheap just to hold on to that as inventory.
So really, there's two available to sell, the other we're holding?
Uh, one in Rocky Point.
One in Rocky Point's got a well on it, so we're, we're gonna probably keep that.